All right, we'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is six thirty P M. And we are in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council present. We have Councilman Fitzsimonu, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Hoon, Councilman Christensen, Councilman Norfelt, and myself, and we are joined at the dais with Mr. Pyle, our city manager, and Ms. Kamik, our city recorder. Tonight, I have the opening ceremony, and I've asked Ms. Roner to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Our next item is special recognition, and I would like to recognize our representative, Ms. Roner, here with us tonight, and appreciate her taking the time to come out and meet with us.
I want to thank all of the city council members for the jobs that you do, and I'm so pleased to be a citizen of West Valley City. And I'm totally, totally humbled that I'm honored, that I have the honor to represent you on the State House of Representatives. And thank you. Good luck on your business tonight.
Thank you. All right, we'll now turn to our minutes of January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I will turn it to the council for discussion or approval of the minutes.
Could move for approval of those minutes?
Second.
We have a motion in seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and those pass unanimously. We'll now go to our awards and proclamations, and we're going to have a proclamation honoring Karen Main, and it's going to be read to us by Councilman Christensen.
A proclamation honoring Karen Main's service to West Valley City. Whereas Karen Main became a member of the Utah Senate in two thousand and eight, continuing her family's legacy of public service. And whereas Senator Main has worked tirelessly since that time for the citizens of West Valley City and for all Utahns. And Senator Main's ability to build relationships across party lines and passionate advocacy have resulted in a distinguished legislative record. And both Republican and Democratic leaders have lauded Senator Main's commitment to bipartisanship and contribution to a civil dialogue. And the working families, students, and business owners of West Valley City have benefited particularly from Senator Main's leadership and advocacy. And Senator Main's legacy will continue to benefit West Valley City residents for years to come. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of West Valley City, Utah, do hereby express our gratitude for Senator Main's distinguished life of public service and extend our best wishes for a healthy and well-deserved retirement.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our comment period. Our comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to comment should le- limit their comments to five minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor, you will come to the microphone. If you did not get a chance to sign up, please give us your name and address. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No person addressing the city council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once. Speakers should not expect a debate with the mayor, council, or staff. Uh, we'll all have our time to respond in the thirty minutes. And we will now turn the time to you. Oh, and if you're here for a public hearing, there'll be a time to speak for that, not at this time. All right, our first one is Ms. Roner. Did you have more you wanted to say? Okay, we'll move on. Speaker two.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jim Vesok. I'm gonna pull my pockets out. Um, last week Nancy Day came in to the study meeting. Again, every time she talks before the study meeting, it costs the citizens of West Valley City hundreds of thousands of dollars of in the parking wreck. This is getting ridiculous. The golf course should be running on a break even at a minimum, but it shouldn't be costing the citizens of West Valley. Most of us don't use those facilities. Um, the fitness center is another one. You know, almost one and a half million dollars a year that cost us, the taxpayers, to have this open. I, I wouldn't mind spending a little bit, but that's a lot of money. Hundreds of thousands of dollars for new equipment. Yes, it's twenty years old, but if it's something that's only supposed to last ten years, the last ten years a little bit should have been put aside. Um, it's poor management. It's a, you know, and it's almost an incompetency. You look at our parking wreck. I know they won an award. I don't know what it was for, because it wasn't for the condition of our parks. Drive around and look at the parks. Um, all summer long, they, they look terrible, other than the grass being cut. Um, they, they still look bad, and it's it's like throwing, throwing money out there that the citizens of West Valley City aren't getting the benefit from. Um, I think it's, it goes up to management. They, I mean, I include the Maverick Center and all our event centers in this, too. They, they should be making money or at least breaking even and not costing the taxpayers thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, the, the stuff needs to be put in budgets, figured out how to pay for some other way. Um, I know that there's the argument with Mr. Powell and the way that they do their budgets. There's gotta be a better way to do it, so they are not dipping into the pockets of the taxpayer every time they need something. Um, changing subjects, Wendy's just did their rebrand opening two weeks ago. I went out, um, and ta- talked to a lot of the G M's and stuff out there. I didn't know that, that Wendy's is one of the original ones, um, from way back. And so they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars updating it. It looks nice, and they're happy to be here in West Valley City. I go to a lot of the grand openings. Um, it's important. It is the lifeline of the city. And they, they never had a doubt about moving. They liked it. They invested a lot of money, and they like being here in West Valley City. Go by and check it out. And then code enforcement. Um, I was, I just found out, you know, I've been complaining about several properties. One of them is a semi parked on residential property on, um, fifty-four and forty-one. Now I found out code enforcement has set, and this could only come from the top, um, a freeze on all enforcement except for courtesy notices. Did you guys know that? And it, and if not, next week is the big subject. Hopefully you hold the people accountable for that, because yes, they, they weren't doing an efficient job in my eyes. They were doing a little bit. Now they're doing nothing except driving around and writing courtesy notices. You know, I understand the freeze on abatements. Um, I think that was kind of on what you guys are putting out, but not a freeze on everything. You know, but they were already doing very little, and now they're doing nothing. So it's several employees that they're gonna do nothing. What do we need them for? That's all I have.
Hey, thank you. Speaker three.
Good evening. I'm Brad Reynolds. Uh, I'm a builder and developer. Uh, we've been fortunate to do a few projects here in West Valley. We probably about a year and a half ago, we completed the project, the villages on twenty-seven hundred, uh, where it's right there at forty-five thirty south and twenty-seven hundred west. Uh, it was over a hundred and forty units and, um, a very successful project and sold out really quickly. And so we're, we're happy with that project, and I hope the city is as well. We here some months ago, uh, came to the city council and proposed a project which was approved on uh, thirty-two hundred west and thirty-five hundred south, right next to the, um, America First Credit Union. And on that project, we have, um, we originally had thirty-eight units. We cut it down to thirty-three so we could get additional parking so that we have every driveway with uh, full-length driveways, and we far exceeded the city ordinance. But in putting the development agreement together, uh, we made a mistake, and we put, we roughly have fifteen hundred square feet on the two floors and approximately about seven hundred in the basement. And so we showed, I'm telling them agreement, we were finishing all of that. And so I'm here to ask the city council if there's any way they would reconsider that when you figure the minimum for city on even a, a single-family home, you can go up to a thousand square feet. We have fifteen hundred. We, they all have two-car garages. And I think part of the issue is, uh, since the time we got this approved, as you know, interest rates have really skyrocketed. So it's a challenging time for developers and builders, but even more challenging for home buyers. And what we'd like to propose, if the city council would consider it, would be to come and do a nice precast like what we did over here on the front, all the way around the project, still have the basements, but do not finish the basements. Uh, and I think right now, when you consider a basement like that, would probably cost up to thirty thousand dollars. And then you take in account costs have not come down. It's going to be very challenging for people to afford those units. And we've always maintained trying to sell units, because we don't want them to be rentals, and this whole project over here was oh, sorry, I was trying to figure out what that was, but, uh, anyway, so we want to maintain that owner, ownership, uh, letting people own the units. And we're just concerned with that, and the staff didn't require it. It was our fault. We put it in there. So if you are so inclined, if you would consider changing that, if you would talk to staff, we'd sure appreciate it. We, we feel strongly that we would do things with the precast stone concrete fence around the whole project, which wasn't proposed, and doing a few cosmetic things that aesthetically we could enhance the project, but still make it so people can afford to come and buy these units. So I'd appreciate your consideration on this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, was there anyone else who came that would like to speech, speak, but didn't have a ti- a chance to sign up? And do we have anybody online? Okay. We will now close the public comment period. Uh, turn it to our city manager. Mr. Pyle, did you have anything to add?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, and to the council, would anyone like to add any comments?
I'll just comment to Mr. Reynolds. Um, I, I would be willing to consider that. I don't, I don't know, Mr. Reynolds. I don't know the project. I'm not, I have no relation to the project. But, um, I remember when we approved it, I was concerned about the basements in the beginning, just because it would be additional space that could be sublet for other people, which exacerbates our problem with parking. So, um, so I would, I'd be willing to, to look at that.
Hey. We can request to have that on, on a future agenda. I think that's it. I'd agree with that, too.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We'll now move on to our public hearings. Um, I'll turn it to Mr. Pyle for application Z eleven, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, so this application contemplates, uh, changing a zoning from manufacturing to B R P designation within the Lake Park Corporate Center. And as the council knows, this is a very large development. And when it was originally done, it started out as manufacturing, and a lot of it remains manufacturing. There have been very various protections in place to keep it to the intended development of, um, office building, but it's also been many, many years since this was originally um, designated such. The general plan does cause or call for Business Research Pike Park, and we are therefore bringing to you the proposal which would switch all of the remaining manufacturing. I believe it is all of the remaining, right? Yep, as Mr. Pastrick confirmed, uh, in Lake Park to Business Research Park or B R P zoning.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the council at this point? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing, and please give us your name and address when you come to the mic.
My name is Fred Cox. I live at forty-four sixty-six Early Duke Street in West Valley City. Um, I'm speaking in favor of this rezone with the, um, proposed amendments that are also recommended by the planning commission. As an architect, I represent a, uh, I work for Intellin, and we have a client that owns Ten Acres, one of the business owners that's affected by the rezone. There's a small piece of their north property that's currently manufactured, and, uh, converting that to business park, uh, as proposed with the proposed amendments would work, and so I'm, I'm speaking in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment period, and I'll turn it to the council. Our action item is ordinance twenty-three dash zero four to the council.
Mayor, last week I, in study meeting, I made a suggestion that we make it more restrictive. Um, I'm gonna come off of that, and I'm okay with the, the way staff has proposed it.
Was that a motion?
Motion to approve application Z eleven, two thousand and twenty-two.
So our action is
Oh, it's their ordinance twenty-three oh four, sorry. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Fitzsimonu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, thank you. We will now go to our public hearing, application Z T five, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. As the previous item was discussed and considered for the zoning change, there was also some request for consideration to changes to the B R P zone itself. So, um, the proposal that you're considering tonight added to the B R P zone, a limit of warehousing amount to sixty percent of all buildings on the lot, limit the amount of light industrial to sixty percent of all buildings on the lot, prohibit overhead doors from facing high-image arterial streets, and require warehouses to meet the commercial design standards as are in current city code, and, um, a particular property owner within Lake Park um, proposed or requested changes, which the planning commission then recommended that would allow the following land uses in the B R P zone. Brew restaurant, brew restaurant liquor retailer, and small brewer, fast food establishment of the drive-up window, and an indoor event center. So those changes, if approved, would, um, accrue to the B R P zone itself, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions before we open up the public hearing?
I have a question. I'm, I'm reading the, the, uh, ordinance, and it doesn't mention the, the, uh, the restaurant or the event center. Those are things that if we wanted to add, we'd have to amend the, the ordinance as presented.
Let me, uh, turn that question, Mr. Pastrick.
So the, the change, if you, if you're looking at the, the ordinance with the table, it's very small, so it's, it's easy to miss it. But if you look at, um, in the table, there's a fast food establishment with the drive-up window. If you notice, the, the, there's a little line through the X which said it was prohibited, and there's the P added, so it's, it's easy to miss because it's so small.
Thank you.
That.
So those are in the ordinance that would, that, uh, we would not need to amend it to include those.
That's correct.
Okay.
Hey, any other questions? Hey, thank you, Mr. Pastor. All right, we will now open the public comment period if anyone would like to come up.
Brad Cox, forty-four sixty-six Early Duke Street, uh, West Valley City. Um, I'm speaking in favor of what is being proposed, uh, by staff and, and through the planning commission. Uh, the property owner, uh, that, uh, our firm represents, uh, is in medical offices and, as proposed, would be able to meet the requirements, uh, as, uh, outlined. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, was there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I will now turn the action item, which is ordinance twenty-three dash zero five, to the council for comments or a motion.
A motion to approve ordinance is twenty-three dash zero five.
Second.
Hey. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzsimonu.
Aye.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our resolutions. We have resolution twenty-three dash zero two. Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution would approve the purchase of new maintenance equipment for Stone Bridge Golf and the Ridge Golf Clubs in the amount of three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The equipment are all, items are all on the state contract and includes six, six items, including a sprayer, uh, sand pro with plow, uh, another sand pro without a plow, a mower, seventy-two inch utility carts, and a deep-time air fryer.
Okay, thank you. So I will now turn this to the council for discussion or a motion.
I move for approval of resolution twenty-three dash zero two. Second.
And we have a motion in a second. Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Fitzsimonu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
No.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. We'll now move to resolution twenty-three dash zero three. Mr. Pyle.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, ma'am. This resolution would approve the replaces and replacement and purchase of safety netting and painting of the poles at Stone Bridge Golf Course in the amount of ninety thousand and twenty-one dollars. There were three bidders. Judge Netting Mountain West was the lowest, uh, bidder that, and we are recommending award of the bid to them.
Hey, thank you. So we have resolution twenty-three dash zero three. Turn it to the council for comments or a motion.
Move to approve resolution twenty-three dash zero three. Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
No.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzsimonu.
Aye.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. We'll turn to resolution twenty-three dash zero four. Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. This item would be for the purchase and installation of the playground structure at the newly constructed Sunset Hills Park in the amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars-ish, a couple of dollars and some change over there.
Hey. Thank you. I'll now turn resolution twenty-three dash zero four to the council for comments or a motion.
I move for approval of resolution twenty-three dash zero four.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Fitzsimonu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now have resolution twenty-three dash zero five. Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution authorizes the purchase of laptops, docking stations, printers, various pieces of computer equipment for the West Valley City Police Department in the amount of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, I'll now turn resolution twenty-three dash zero five to the council for comments or a motion.
A motion to prove resolution twenty-three dash zero five.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzsimonu.
Aye.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, thank you. Um, just to explain for anyone online or in the audience that hasn't been here before, we seem like we're just ripping through these with no care, but we have studied them last week. We've had a full week to ask questions, um, and make sure we're, we know what we're voting on, and then this week we just kind of go through them a little faster. So please note that we are taking the appropriate amount of time to research each one of these items. Okay, we'll now go to resolution twenty-three dash zero six. Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution would allow, uh, installation uh, cost for making a Utopia connection from the existing system over to the Ridge Golf Club. This would uh, improve the system from a reliability of internet access and therefore making payments and accessing information, that sort of thing there at the course. I did want to make it clear that the resolution calls for forty-two thousand dollars of construction money for that connection and a seven hundred dollar a month, uh, monthly subscription or service fee, which, as Mr. Bunderson explained to you in the earlier meeting, found a different way to do it through using City Hall as the facility, and therefore would low, lower that monthly, uh, fee to fifty dollars a month. So I just wanted to make it clear that if this was adopted, that's the route that we would be pursuing, as opposed to the seven hundred dollar a month fee, which would give us added redundancy, um, by calling the Ridge a separate facility for internet services purposes, but I frankly think it's worth that much. Neither was that the recommendation by Mr. Bunderson and I T, once they found that out.
Okay, thank you. Um, I will now ta- turn resolution twenty-three dash zero six to the council for discussion or a motion.
Just want to clarify that I'm voting no tonight, out of because I have a hard time opening budgets. that I'm voting no tonight, out of, because I have a hard time opening budgets. So, just wanted to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, may I, um, is that, we talked about this one earlier today regarding uh one of the council member, he mentioned about this, the Stalin is a little bit uh inexpensive to go with, is that, that's the one we talking about?
You talking about the Starlink system?
Yeah.
So here's what we would do, as Eric explained, um the, the difference between the two systems as were proposed and as was inquired to look into. That one is still obviously being a satellite system, is a wireless system and it's still subject to the same sorts of interruptions, weather-related issues, wind uh latency issues like Eric described, and so it might give us a little bit better service than the wireless uh service that we have currently, but it might not either, in fact, that's the whole reason we recommended the higher wire, hardware connection for the Utopia connection so that we had a much more reliable service. So if the council doesn't uh approve this, which would also be fine, we could continue along with the, the wireless service we have, but probably what we would do instead of uh going to like Starlink or a different system is just try to make improvements to the antenna system and maintain the wireless system we have.
Okay, just Starlink has a thirty-day money-back guarantee, so I wouldn't, wouldn't be opposed to trying it for thirty days.
But even if it does work, um, in the long run, it's gonna cost us more money.
Wow.
Well, didn't, didn't they charge us five hundred dollars a month?
Okay, so you're right.
My calculations so that uh, the total expenses will be more with Starlink in about eight years. But we're in for the long haul.
Yeah.
But the payment, how much gonna be for each month though?
Five hundred dollars for Starlink, fifty dollars for Utopia.
So you're right.
But Utopia is a, is a much bigger startup cost.
With the trenching, sorry, did I cut anyone?
No, you're good.
With the trenching um or that construction of the hard line, is there anything else that could be laid in that while that hole's open, or is that, this is strictly just the fiber optic line?
I don't, excuse me, I don't know the answer to that question, I can check into it, but I'm probably not, I don't think we need any like electrical upgrades or other sorts of associated that way, but I can check into it.
Does Utopia, or not Utopia, does uh USANA need any internet, we can
I can check that.
Hear the cost?
I don't know, I'll, I'll check into it, I could also go back and, in fact, I'll do this anyway, upon approval, I can go back and squeeze Utopia further and see if there is any further uh the hard installation cost break we can get, but, but I'll be happy to check the USANA connection too.
For me, just because the Starlink uh proposal was new and presented pretty preliminarily, I think it made sense um as well, but would anyone be really opposed to tabling this particular one until we got a little bit more information?
All right.
If not, I'm down to vote for it too, but if anyone's interested in investigating that other option, I'd be open to tabling. And if we're not, then let's vote, but I'm just saying.
I'm just wondering what information we would want to, we, we would be, be looking for, what, what else are we?
In, in a week, you could flesh out if um you saw a thing.
Sure, yeah.
Um, if there's anything else, we could put in the trench.
Yeah.
Um, and then we could have, also have the the resolution state clearly that it's gonna be fifty dollars a month versus seven hundred.
Yep, we could do that too, in fact, the, the only time urgency here, when this was originally brought to me, was we'd like to have this in place before the new golf season really gets going, so a couple of weeks, one way or the other isn't gonna disturb that, I don't think. From a, from a trenching scheduling standpoint, we gotta get on the schedule of Utopia, but I don't think this will disrupt that.
I'm personally aware that there's internet issues at the ridge. We, we used it for a, a dinner, we reserved the space there for a dinner and um it took about ten days for them to have internet service to where they could call me so I could pay the bill, so, oh my goodness.
So it, it definitely is a reliability issue, there's no question that we have problems up there and that they have for a while and I might also point out that um as the Utopia system has gotten uh larger and closer, that cost has come down, the first time we went and, and bid this or asked them about it, the installation cost was gonna be eighty-five thousand or something along that line, so we have seen significant reduction even in the cost of getting us to it.
And I know that as Utopia has expanded through the city, um they've basically dug their own trenches and, you know, the abeling that goes through those trenches is all through Utopia, so I don't think they would put anything else in the trench with them.
There are some conduit laws, and I don't want to get deep into this because I'm not gonna remember the, the detail, but there are some conduiting laws, uh, uh, which sounds weird, right, but the state statute requires in terms of allowing space, it's like state money is used or that sort of thing, like for never, once again, we try not to get into um examples that I might be wrong on from a memory standpoint, but in this particular case, Utopia wouldn't use, in fact, again, this is one of the advantages of Utopia, right, they wouldn't allow somebody to physically run a line through that connection. But what they do do, and this is the whole model of Utopia, is any internet provider could provide service over that, Starlink could do it for that matter, on a, on a, we're gonna utilize Utopia's system for long haul, short haul, you know, connections, that sort of thing, and be another um business enterprise that a Starlink or anybody like Starlink could choose to do, so even though there's only one physical pipe, yeah, there's, I can't even remember how many providers that are on that.
I, I know there's different providers, but I'm
Yeah, that was
Pretty, I'm leery about a electrical connection through there, I don't think
Right, oh, I see, I, I think I see where you're going.
Or water, something like that.
Would we even want something else in the trench, okay, I gotcha.
With that, uh, I will move that we table resolution twenty-three oh six until our next regularly scheduled uh regular meeting.
So, just to make sure we're doing this from a verbiage standpoint, so we're continuing it basically, right, at the motion, okay.
And that would be February third would be our next regularly scheduled.
Seven.
Seven.
Yep.
I'm second for that.
Whatever you say, yeah, February seventh, February third's when I'm doing something else. But it's second in my mind.
Tom has already seconded.
I don't second it.
So we have
That's good.
And a second and a third. And so Ms. Kemic, would you call the roll?
Councilman Petis Manu.
Hi.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Hi.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion for continuance passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now go to our new business, which is application S M I eleven twenty-two, Mr. Pyle.
Thank you ma'am, um, this is the final plat approval for the applicant, Mr. Ken Mill at thirty-seven eighty-nine south, fifty-two hundred west, doing a seven lot subdivision and gaining final subdivision approval for the day estate subdivision, we've now talked about this two or three times uh across the months and it's now ready for this step.
Okay, thank you. So I will pass application S M I eleven twenty-two to the council for comments or emotion.
Motion to approve S M I eleven twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, Ms. Kemic.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu.
Hi.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll go to our consent agenda, Mr. Pyle, we have resolution twenty-three dash zero seven and twenty-three dash zero eight.
Thank you ma'am, there's nothing unusual or costs associated, uh, they're both warranty deed acceptances, uh, I guess I should say there is one slightly unusual circumstance, that is that the first one is really between two city agencies, the redevelopment agency and the city.
Okay. So I'll turn this to the council for the consent agenda, you can take them one at a time or both at the same time.
Move to approve both items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, Ms. Kemic.
Councilman Petis Manu.
Hi.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Hi.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, thank you. We do not have a need for a closed session, so we have one more action item.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned, thank you so much for coming out.